All right, we're starting. I am planning the North School meeting, meeting through order for Wednesday, January twenty second, twenty twenty five, four six p.m. Just if you are recording, please don't know when you have the norm year here according as well. First off, we will do the weather. Before we get started, obviously, we have, I can't remember. A little tragedy here in Norman. Just want to take a moment of silence for Josie Bento and Eric Fandler. Thank you. And yet again, I would love to mention outstanding our superintendent with the Avenue team. You know, all of our resources, you know, run a fire, run a police, obviously, this is affecting the community greatly, such tragedy. You know, there really is no words. So moving on, first up on the agenda is the public climate period. Again, this is a little new for us, starting coming in January, but if anyone out there has any public comments to make, you can do so now. Steam them, and we'll be moving on. Vote to approve amendments. We have a bunch of them here, so we'll start with the disposssession motion. And vote to the December eleven executive session meeting. All those in favor? Next one would be the January eighth open session meeting. I just had motion to approve. All those in favor? And the last one was our January eighth joint meeting with the select board and the finance committee. Entertain a motion to approve. All along. Uh, moving on, we got me warrants, Mr. Kellerman.
I am going to approve the following warrants. The school spends more than January eighth, twenty twenty five, four million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred thirty, fifty cents. And the school payroll warrants, December twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, four million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-two, fifty-five cents, and January ninth, five hundred five, one million, two hundred thirty thousand, one ninety-one, sixty-two. I would enter those into public record.
Thank you. Moving on to our student move back update, that's an end. Oh, it's a big one.
All right, um, so, so I'm at the Yale students are getting super excited for our Hey PTO Booster Fun Fun Run fundraiser, which just began this week. So your registration started on January tenth, the Booster Fun on campus personnel will be here working with our staff. Next week to build incentives for our students, our big kickoff day was on Tuesday, January twenty first. We have Booster Fun happening January twenty first through the thirty-first. Each and every day with activities, character lessons, and more with our big glow fun run happening gym on Thursday, thirty-first throughout the day. This is a big fundraiser for the Yale, um, the year of the year, which helps them pay for the new playground structures we purchased a couple of years ago. They are finally almost done and paying the bill. Um, so any other money raised will go to the student assemblies for three-year books. And helping to fill the book vending machine and other student activities. The kids have little incentives each day to earn fun privileges throughout. And then the beginning benefit of raising twenty thousand dollars would be for these three gig, and these people have all to do something fun and a little crazy. In past years, they've chased pigs, exotic animals, including a little group dueling at the Yale nights, and last year we were slumming slums in purple goo. We can't wait to see what we are going to have this year. And at the JCS, we celebrated Dr. Robert Luther King Jr.'s birthday as a school community with an assembly last Friday morning. All grade K, K, first, second, and third graders, third grade students were invited. The assembly included music that was either from the civil rights era or written about Dr. King. We learned more about Dr. King using a slideshow with pictures of Dr. King during his life. And we watched a short video together, shared information specifically geared towards elementary students. I shared a link to the video, the JCS families, and the fact that they wanted to watch it together as a family and talked about Dr. King together. Third graders also wrote their own poems about Dr. King, and fifth grade students were like, were selected to read their poem allowed during the assembly. Those students' poems are displayed on the bulletin board in the main school hallway. Finally, the slideshow that we discussed together as a school is being displayed in our lobby TV all week as a reminder of Doc, of the positive impact of, of Dr. King's message. Oh, my God. Um, and then from the middle school, the NS boys basketball team is having a terrific season. They're working unbeaten at eleven and O. Coach Johnson says they are not only very athletic and a great, created defense, but they are, are also very nice group of kids. I'm joined by Coach. The NMS drama program announced that this year's production will be Annie. Ninety-four students are auditioning for their parts. Audition begins yesterday and will continue through Thursday. Our enrichment classes now taking place at NMS, our new teacher, Ms. Julia Larson, has done a great job and and students that are taking the class are really enjoying it and have a very positive thing to say. The seventh grade midway carnival is on Friday night. It is fun, free event hosted by NMS parent board to celebrate grade seven's halfway point through the school. Friday is day ninety of the school year. That's all.
Very much. Any questions? Good. Uh, next up is our students spotlight series with Deca regional competition results.
So usually for these students spotlights, I do the presentation, but since I have the deputy president here with me this evening, um, Mr. Benson King, he is always be presenting. Sure, come on, very good question.
Um, but yeah, thank you, the doctor, and you, girl, this is opportunity. Still, as most of you know, uh, our chapter was high as a couple of weeks ago. We had a very successful time. We brought about seventy students, um, there, which has been pretty big in the past years. After COVID, it's been really hard to make kind of a sizable chapter, but this year has been really well, and we have some relief. Joining everyone, Paula, they're two of my peers. We're also seniors, and I work with them very closely in Deca, so I'm just going to let them share a bit for what happened.
Uh, Ben Redd has a tavage, I'm the vice president of membership for Deca, and Lake Benson, some of these have sent about seventy students to districts, uh, which is eighteen more than we sent last year, so a big increase on population. Uh, and even though we had more students, we still saw forty-one, which is about two-thirds of all all-competitive states, this is the home district in March. And even though twenty-six didn't qualify, thirteen still, uh, received recognition for top ten placement in their category, which means that they have a lot of future promise, and we will hope to see them qualify next year. Uh, as a district, our district A sends a hundred forty people to states, and we, as a chapter, own Deca, just eight percent of those total people. However, we have twenty-nine percent of the people qualified, so we had a lot of contribution for even how small we are. And we also had ten of the twenty-eight first-place winners, and thirty-three teams, uh, their individual receive a total of fifty-five million awards, which are given to reflect scores on exams and role players. This is another way to show that.
Oh, great. So the executive best program, um, Norton is a historically small chapter for Deca, so like in the world of large schools. Um, it was incredible to have a much better success as we did, and that was due to all the training that we put into it from September all the way to summer. Um, Benson was an amazing guy to put together a crazy plan for all the test prep, role play prep, and just over a hundred teams that went into creating that success. As well, we have advisors who were willing to go through the entire process, helping kids with what they didn't know, um, testing, role plays, they helped through their three periods and after school, as long as students and our fifteen and fifteens. Um, they help people feel comfortable and confident within their role plays, because this is a new experience for all these people. They're going through an uncomfortable transition with something completely new. Uh, at the end of the day, a lot of things just having new experiences and making new friendships, and they've just got confidence in themselves, so please strive.
Yeah, thank you both. Um, but yeah, it's really, um, like, just a little bit of context if you don't really know what Deca is. Uh, so a bunch of schools, it's all over Massachusetts, so it's an international organization. So you compete at the district level, the state level, and at the international level, and the Norton has always sent groups to each of those competitions. Um, but we really, you're, you're just going on three components, which are two role plays, um, which is just a conversation or presentation with the judge. Usually teachers, administrators, and you really volunteers. Uh, and then you say how much is a hundred questions, multiple choice, and then that averages out, and that's your score. Uh, but like Benny was talking about, and tell you, we go against a lot of schools that have Deca as a class. While we do have business classes, this is what some kids are doing every single day, um, through their rotation. And this is something that our students and staff are doing when they have the free time, when they can teach part-time classes. Uh, so that's just why our success is really worth, you know, striking light to. It took a while to actually not only just us, um, but the other age group of children that are not today.
Thank you, um, to Benson and Samia and Ben, um, for coming and presenting to us tonight. I think, um, our Deca program has always been successful at Norton High School. To see these numbers and youth returns and how many people qualified to go to states, you guys have so much to be proud of. I heard a lot about the, um, the training session that you guys have going on this spring, I'm sorry, this fall, and, um, awesome, awesome job. I'm very proud of all of you, and I can't wait to see what comes next. For April in March. Congratulations, guys.
Very well. Yeah, I mean, just like a couple of things even that we got in our pack. Um, I mean, I know they didn't really, they did a little humble. Um, you know, the exam scores over the last three years have gained significant traction, uh, going up about eight points from last year. Their role playing amount over five points, and obviously, that'd be part of their attendance, so, you know, quite, yeah, quite the feat. Definitely certain, certainly proud of, uh, Deca chapter here in Norman. Uh, next up is our reviewing vote on the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
Okay, hot off the precipice. I know this is something that people always are waiting for, through the school calendar. Um, so this is a very traditional calendar for Norton, uh, has students returning on the Tuesday following Labor Day, which this year is, uh, Tuesday, September second. Um, that will be for grades one through twelve. Our kindergartners always start on the Wednesday, and then our Little Lancer preschool program always begins on the Friday. Uh, so that is very traditional for us. Um, the December break is actually going to be very similar to the current year, except the extra day off will be at the end of the break, um, where the, um, New Year's Day is on a Thursday, and we'll keep school closed on Friday the second. Doesn't really make a lot of sense to come back for that one day and open the building, so students will return on Monday, January fifth. Um, and with all, if all goes well, with minimal snow days, we will actually be out on Friday, June twelfth, um, which is an incredible day, and very rarely see a house than that soon. Um, so that's what are we're proposing here. Um, you will notice that this, just as the last several years, staff comes back in August. The Tuesday and Wednesday before Labor Day for our, um, Welcome Back and Professional Development Day, and then also that, um, one last one here, um, there are no other days off in terms of an election. Because we need for it, it's not a question until election year, so we would, uh, have school.
So as I was reading this, um, it'll be my last year with the child in one of these schools. But I wanted to specifically address the gap in March for the time of all. So my thought initially would work out is the twenty-sixth as an elementary early release, is it possible to make the twenty-seventh a district-wide early release?
So we actually have not added any of the district-wide early release dates yet. Um, that's something that we're looking at internally. Um, just because we don't love the non-Fridays personally. I think it's, it becomes a day where, um, we end up missing out on people. Um, so I, I think ideally I would love to change those days, um, but there will absolutely be an early release day in March. Um, we'll, you know, likely continue to do the one on, except for November. Um, we don't do them in November and December and June.
Because my, my concern was from, from February to April break is forty straight days of school, with not a half-day schedule and no days off and holidays. So that's just, it's the longest stretch we have through the school year. And it's been historically a problem for many years, but I think we just have to get in a half-day, or if we had an in-school, you know, in year PD day, if we go back to that, um, that it should be that March day or something. But, um, and that's a long stretch, um, for our students, so I think that's something that needs to be, in some way, favorable to get something on.
Well, check, is that no days off? Um, Jessica, the only question I would have is with the, with the district early release days and anything else, would there be anything held up in teacher negotiations?
Um, at this time, I don't see anything that would be an issue. Um, if we, as of right now, um, it schedules the students for a hundred and eighty days as required, and our staff contract at this time is a hundred and eighty-two. Um, so I don't see any issues, but this at least gives families a rough idea of when we are returning, um, and what those vacation weeks will look like, and I know people start planning. We get phone calls and questions.
And then, in terms of voting, uh, is something we can vote on as is, and then as we possibly know early release days, we can.
What we'll do is, I, I mean, I would recommend putting on the calendar as a whole, um, and then we would come back and bring you guys the, um, early release dates. And if it would be, just, we would vote to have them.
Yeah, and just depending on.
Yeah, and you'll notice those midterm dates are already built in. That was what I thought I was going to say earlier. Those midterm dates are, so that would just, just build them in. It makes sense.
Did we used to, kind of as I know, did we used to have three half-days for midterms, and we changed it at some point?
Yeah, we used to have three, and then we had.
And then estimated time of people to have the early release day and schedule on the weekend.
Oh, yeah. I would say no later than March. Uh, we do, so the way that we've done it is, I believe there's seven. We do September, October, November, September, October, January, February, March, April, and May. So seven. We skip the month of November because of the end of the month of Thanksgiving. You also took a veteran's day in there, and then with a holiday break in December, it, it's too much time, but we just, we skip those months.
Yeah, because we can. It would be too much of an issue to say have two half-days in March. Whereas, but I'm just thinking like, um, yeah, someone wants to have, you know, multiple holidays or coming off a break or something like that. I, I just, I find, I struggle with this every year with the calendar. It's just a long stretch in the case.
Um, as the school committee, you guys can choose to do whatever you'd like. You might have some veggie in your ass picking up outside your home, but. Well, I was just gonna add, personally, um, those Friday half-days, I think are tricky, and I'm not, yes, personally, but also I feel like at what I told them, we collected. Um, I've heard that those are hard to challenge, and then on behalf of the Little Lancer families, those Friday half-days for those students that are in the PM preschool, they're paying the same tuition and losing a significant amount of teaching days. So, um, I, I don't know anybody else's thoughts on full-day PD days instead of once-a-month half-days, if that's something to consider? Or if we want to keep the half-days, I don't know, I just. So if we were to transition and add full-day PD days, that would increase the teacher day. So we would go from teachers working one, eight, two, to working one, eight, three, or one, eight, four, so that has a financial impact that's, um, a contractual impact. Um, unfortunately, we can't swap two half-day PDs for a whole day, just because students need to attend at a hundred and eighty. And they are real sticklers about that at the, um, at the department. Um, but it's something that I think what we'll do, Brian and I will sit down and take a look at what our recommendations are for those early release days, and then we'll move on. Um, and then we'll decide how to proceed.
And is there anything that says it has to be a Friday for the release?
No. And ideally, I would love to get rid of Friday, too.
Yeah, I think, I think the Fridays have a lot of issues, um, even from PD side, I just know.
Very much.
Working, exactly, working, and you work all week with, you know, kids, and then all of a sudden, you know, a Friday afternoon, things like that. Attendance and everything else, you know, I feel like that's a very tricky subject.
And I think, I mean, Danny, you're the probably the one that was. They used to be Thursdays, and then they moved into Fridays, and they, and our thought was if you put them on a warm weekend, or you put them on the Friday before break, maybe families will be able to take off earlier, but it really just, it, it challenges, we have attendance issues, um, with that, and, um, you know, as you said, Nick, people aren't super motivated on the Friday afternoon before a weekend or before a vacation, and I totally understand that.
Is there, I know we always have done traditional early release days, have we ever looked at late start days?
Yes, we have done late start days at the high school. Um, I have to think about this, how long ago maybe we stopped doing them? I'm gonna say probably ten years ago. Um, I'd say probably about ten years ago, um, there were different beliefs that had been used on, you know, proper ways of allowing these students to be in the classroom. Um, and then we eliminated them for that reason. So, and then if, if the high school is only, the only one that's available, it's hard to do vertical alignment curriculum. If you, you know, if you wanted six to twelve to do something together, um, but that's, that was the reason we did away with it a number of years ago.
Any other questions? We could have voted on this with the, with the, with the schedule for four months. So I feel like we will in the rank, I just had a motion to approve. Next up is the first reading of the entrance age.
Okay, so, um, twenty eighteen, the school committee was approached by a member of the community to, um, revise our entrance age policy for kindergarten to give a little bit of wiggle room for students that may not be five by the August thirty-first date. So what we did at that time was we, uh, we implemented this third paragraph that you're seeing in front of you, that students who are born after August thirty-first, but before the first day of school for Norton could be screened at the request of their parents. So we've been doing this for a number of years. Unfortunately, what Pam and I recently discovered is that the previous policy on entrance age was actually the paragraph at the top and then numbers one and two. And when the policy was changed, number three just replaced the entire piece. And so ultimately, we want to update the policy now to now include the information about children that are found in honor before August thirty-first or eligible for kindergarten. And also, this piece for number two, the initial admission of children in first grade will, first, will involve a consideration of their chronological age as well as their readiness for the academic work. Right now, all we have is number three, and it really doesn't give any guidelines for any other services. So what we're asking you to do is to basically reinstate the previous with the addition of all was approved in twenty eighteen. So it's a comprehensive entrance age policy. I think unfortunately, it was replaced by an accident instead of being added to.
Yeah, I remember. I'm curious on number two. That'd be, if, if a child doesn't attend kindergarten here, we would still take a look at, is that what's, that's kind of near towards.
It certainly could be. Um, kindergarten is still not mandated by law. Um, so we do, on occasion, find a child that has not had a school experience, who's been looking to come into first grade. Um, we also will find that families will send their child to a parent's company, where they can make an offer of her identity. And they project on their child in first grade, because they're technically not eligible by age based on our policy. And I think that was some of the things that came up when we looked at our policy and said, oh, wait a minute, our policy actually doesn't say that. So, um, it's those types of situations that come up.
And, and I'm sure we may have a handful here and there, but this isn't something that's pressing every year, right?
No, it, it's, it's certainly the exception, but we're the rule. Um, you know, I have, in my role as a superintendent, I had conversations with parents all the time that were interested in sending their child early. I explained that I have two July fees, and I sent one, and I kept one, and you'll never regret them more time, but you might regret sending it too soon. Um, and usually they just kind of need to talk their service sometime. Um, and we have, you know, accept students in the past and given our recommendations, and in some cases, then yes, they're ready, and other cases, we then no, really, we rather got them in every year. And that decision is final, and so that has been beneficial, I think, over the years. So I think for both families and the district.
Yeah, I, I was a September birthday.
Well, I have an October child, but you and I grew up with a very different generation than right now, so. Not saying we're old, because, hey. And again, this is just a first reading, so it does not need any action tonight, because policy, we have to present it twice publicly, we can only go at the second.
Any other questions on this one?
Just for number two, so when you were excited about considering, um, a lot of people need to have readiness, is that in that if a student, um, is there like a screening kind of process before?
Yes, yeah, so what we typically do, and it's a little bit different, like if you're coming into kindergarten, we give you a different assessment. Uh, but we use, we typically use STAR, which is something that's really easy for us to be able to do. Um, early elementary, you know, we might do the personal base methods with them as well, just to kind of see when they're calling, and, um, if that happens, we're pretty much used to be there.
Which is that would be like explicitly written in here, like a, I don't know, I don't really want to put the assessments we get.
No, or just, it's just like a, we'll come in for a, or we'll participate in. Um, we could say that they would be screening.
I don't know, I don't know if that's what we're reading.
I, I mean, that's absolutely what we do, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
Um, and in the after the process, we explain to the parent. Unfortunately, we really haven't had this to back it up, which has been a little bit tricky, because that is one hundred percent a problem.
I just want to clarify a question, I guess. So right now, this policy is, is what you're proposing?
Right now, this policy is written as just number.
Just number. You're adding the first two.
And then those two.
They got blocked up, and now we're trying to get them back in the game.
A little more clarity on the process.
Um, all good? All right, moving on, since you don't want to take action on that, uh, will be the discussion, there we go again, uh, discussion on the FY twenty-six school budget.
All right, this is how those people are done. Um, all right, so, wait, I'm sorry, also both. Uh, so what you have in front of you is, um, a level service budget for FY twenty-six. We have asked, um, every department in the level principal and admin to get to ask their level, um, service budget compared to last year. Um, we pay our first, we, 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 we increase, um, two million, two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. Uh, that went to over six, which is one percent, required by statute. Um, at the bottom of this page, you'll see that we separate it as we have done years past. Um, the first section is the mandated education, education, which is our special education service within staff. Um, this, it also includes all the added districts. It also includes all the added district placement and special education, transportation in the district and out. That increase for the spent services is $744,145 with a 5.11% increase. The next is for the general education budget, also all of our other operation pieces that includes the general education, athletics, all activities in our other operations. So that increase over at FY25 is $1,463,184, which is an almost 70% increase. What we also have done on the following page is pretty much summarize the, all the increases into easier categories. So the very first and the most prominent was the staff through all the contract applications, and that is every single department, whether it is the teachers, the parents, custodians, admin, and that is $2,715,68. The next is our added district costs for tuition. It's a little bit lower this year, at this moment, only, which is $102,000. That has already been voted a little bit in the last two weeks, so that number could change along with the number below it, which is why it has an asterisk next to it, which is the added district special education transportation. We've had a lot of students this year that we were able to ride together in the same location, so that has had some negative data. The next is other, special education program increases for $8,400, as to their contract service lines and other services that required $490,000 for our in-district transportation with our wood contract. And then we also guided the increase in supplies. This is predominantly spent supplies and other consumable material and travel, about $14,000. And the last piece is our operation, which is typically our utilities, facilities, and it's $69,480, which gives our budget for FY26, $37,742,900.
So I think Christine and I shared with you a little bit more of a comprehensive budget binder as well this year, where you are able to go through and look and see every single line item. So it is broken out, number one, first has the entire budget for the district, then it's broken down by school, by department. And then you also have all of our school choice funds at the back, so you can see how those lines are developed year over year. We wanted to give you these two cover pages too, because number one is a little bit of a more of a user-friendly working document. I know one of the things that I found last year working with our community is, you know, trying to make it accessible for them. So as I've shared with you all here, as I shared at the joint meeting, our goal for next year, the level service, we want to make sure that we are maintaining the current levels of staff and programs that we have right now. So that is 6.2%, if you recall, and I'm sure the public does as well. Last year, that number was 12%. So I feel, I think, we both feel pretty good that, you know, we're able to bring that level service number to you this year and in a place that is more reasonable. As Christine mentioned, there are still changing targets on a daily basis. However, we are still continued and committed to looking at ways that we can save and ways that we can do things in a more creative manner to get that 6% number down a little bit more. One of the biggest challenges for us this year as we are preparing the budget is the fact that we are in contract negotiations with all three of our unions. So we are making projections, but we are not able to really tie down any of that until those contracts are signed. So it's not that we don't have the information or we're not willing to share the information or we're not prepared. It is simply that we don't know what those numbers will be. As we, you know, one of the things that we've, we always have, you know, for a number of years, the school committee has seen have been the mandated educational cost, other than his general expenses, operations. And also it is important for us to know that our ELL services are included under that mandated education as well as our homeless services. Going home, which is important, I don't want to use this as special education, or special education population. It is our population and our student, so it's every, every single student that walks in our doors. So, but I know that's something that we always talked about and we always look at. And then the other, the budget action, I know that we're sharing with you, it's helpful, I think, for people to see how you get there. How do you start with one number and then add another? So hopefully those lines will do a little bit of clarity around exactly why. Yeah, since I've worked around, if there are questions within the budget document that you receive, it's a lot. There is significant, like there's a million line items to go through. And what I always do, every time Christine gives me the packet, is I go almost all the way over to the far right and I look at the percentage increases online and then I'll say, okay, talk to me about this one, we're talking about this one. And I think it's important for people to know too, that oftentimes we remove items between school choice and the regular budget. And that's how we end up balancing our budget at the end of the year is using more in school choice. So I'll open up questions or conversation with the committee and. Thank you, Kristen.
Any questions?
I think this is one of the easier, easier, really, highest presentations I've had in a long time. You know, this really, and I pride myself knowing the ins and outs of our budget to do this. Unfortunately, we see a lot of the same things every year here. Every year it's mandated funding for special education, which we can't do anything about. You know, but I think, you know, the one concern which we can't really do anything about is that those contract negotiations have really got to play a big part in this budget. You know, I hope we can, you know, come to, come to those agreements before we're submitting budgets. You know, this is a good starting point. And I feel we're all getting a great ending point, it's not going to be that at all. So I think this, this really kind of does put everything in a good way to view it. So I think as you mentioned, Dr. Romeo, that we have to now put on our creative caps and see what we can do to possibly bring this number down.
I also want to mention that you guys did receive a list of staffing requests at the front. Those are not included in the budget. Those are simply requests.
I just, my first question is, basically, obviously with the contract negotiations, this increase in salaries due to contractual obligations is, actually, a shot in the dark placeholder than more than anything.
How does it change?
Of course. Perfect. Any other questions?
I just want to say I appreciate it, just briefly, because the budget is definitely the area that I struggle with understanding. And from last year to this year, like, I just thank you, Christine, we really appreciate this. And I also think it's going to be well as well, because you may get very easy to, to read and understand, so. Thank you. And I want to mention that Christine and I are available to meet with you one-on-one if you have questions or, you know, want us to walk you through a little bit more. We did give Dan a preview as a charity steering for our meeting and I think it was helpful for both of us to have a conversation about, you know, our goals and what our, you know, dreams are for this year. But it's, you know, please let us know or we're always happy to sit with you and have a conversation.
Obviously, I think we talked about the old, you know, based on the joint meeting, obviously seeing the town manager's budget or proposed budget today that we got in our emails, you know, obviously, I think 6.21 is never happening, would be quite big, to be honest. So I think, yeah, definitely getting creative and I think from a school community standpoint, you know, we got to figure out, you know, do some more work on your own, ask those questions, we got to go out and get creative through official. How did we, that's exactly what I'm saying, Ben. The, how did, do we refactor him for state funding? Were we doing back to 30 or were we adding more state funding?
It was based on 30, but it was the beast of that.
From state, right.
We don't factor that into our numbers because that will factor into what the town receives part of their local aid. So if you looked at Mr. Unit's proposals earlier today, he has, he has a line there and, you know, I have it right here with me. There's a line here that projects local aid, so.
That's not until the state finalizes their budget.
Not until the state finalizes, it won't be until roughly July. But we can't, so that really comes, this is all cost versus the revenue piece that will come from them. So we, this is just what it's going to cost us to run the district.
I mean, I guess obviously, you know, going back, you know, it's a $30 or $70 or, you know, this past year we got 104. You know, has your association and maybe what can the school committee do to help turn it somewhat increase that number? You know, we obviously know district, Norton is a district that, you know, has the ability to pay or where the state defines us as, you know, but you go down the road, whether you go to Hattlerboro or Tonham or, you know, anywhere else kind of, it's either, you know, you're, we're lumped in with the Westwoods, you know, and they're a little bit, but we're the exact same and we all know whether or not the exact same. So I mean, is that something that we can bring up with our representatives and try to, I mean, that is the number, that is where you can get some significant amount of money, you know, to be a little bit more fair across the board?
Absolutely. So a few weeks ago, maybe last week, I was able to present to the Norton Open Town Council and one of the things that I shared with them is a few key areas where we really could use people to reach out to their elected officials and advocate for schools. Number one is all around the minimum, minimum aid per district. So that's what Nick mentioned, was the $30. Last year, we were fortunate to get 104. And that money immediately goes to the general fund on the town side. So as the committee knows, we advocated that all-town meeting to get that extra $74 per student allocated to the schools. It is a per pupil, but the way that it works is it goes to the general fund. So what we, number one, need to do is advocate at the state level and say that, you know, $30 per pupil of additional tax after 78 is not sufficient and that the funding formula is broken, that they need to put together a group who look at the Student Opportunity Act and look, look at, look at the equity, as you mentioned. Norton is not one of them. We don't know almost the people who are, that community is able to. And it's honestly not fair to ask us to do that either. And so number one, look at that, look at the equity in that. But also number two is, once it comes to the general fund, the per pupil allocation should come directly to the school. And so whether we get $100 or we get $1,200 per student, especially if we're doing the advocacy, we want to make sure that money is going to the needs of our students and our community. The other thing that is really important for people to advocate for to their elected officials is circuit breaker reimbursement, which is, circuit breaker reimbursement is for students who attend a special education program outside of the district. So any student that goes to a collaborative or private placement to best meet their educational needs, Norton is responsible for the first $40,000 of that placement. Anything over and above is supposed to be reimbursed through the circuit breaker fund. That number fluctuates year over year. Sometimes it's 65% reimbursement. Right now, my organization, depending if that's in allocating, that it should be no less than 90% reimbursement. So that's something, I mean, theoretically, it's supposed to be 100% reimbursement, but it's not.
So real quickly on that point, when it comes to out-of-district placements, when you mentioned reimbursement and things like that. Most of the out-of-district schools are not, I don't want to say not monitored, but they charge what they charge and you pay what you pay. Like there's no, you know what, I think 10% increase is too high.
There is a gateway group that sets the rate. How, or can set the range. Yes, so initially, all of the increases were like three to five, or one to three or something like that, two, a few years ago it was 14. And then the following year was seven. So you had a 20% increase in a very short period of time, which was debilitating for districts. So the reimbursement process, like that's what circuit breaker is for. And you'll notice on some of the documents that Christine has shared with you, it says net of circuit break. So we take that money, we turn around and take that money and pay tuitions for the following year. The other piece that goes right along with it is special education transportation. We are supposed to get reimbursed, last year we were promised 75%, we were only given 50%. That's a big difference.
So we reverse that numbers?
Yeah, but they reverse them really publicly. And so that is what I ask all of you to do and advocate for and tell your friends.
We know, speaking of increases, we know if our out-of-district partners are proposing increases this year, or do we have a time, a moment that might be?
We do not have for the collaboratives, but for the private, for FY26, it's 3.67.
And again, like this is exactly what we said, you know, just doing that, that's 3.67, if we only get a two and a half percent budget, we're somewhat, that's, this is the ongoing unfortunate moment we're at. And obviously at the state level, the state's telling us up to $40,000, we do our part and then they're supposed to reimburse us and they don't. So like that needs to be a huge, you know, piece. Then, you know, what I'm going to try to look to do here is try to, you know, reach out to areas, we'll commit this and try to get a little bit more numbers in action here because, you know, the state, they're talking about 75%, but in Congress, 13%. Yet again, if you go back to the tax barriers, just to try to figure out how you do this, you know, and or the budget's already set and now you're trying to find out, you know, where you can pull from to make up the difference. So it's, to me, it's a never-ending cycle and until the state actually does what they're going, what they say they're going to do, we're just going to be in this revolving door, you know, for, for years to come, you know? And I think we all know how the overriding vote went. I don't think that that's not going to be even on the table, you know, for years to come here, that we're going to keep seeing an issue until we can actually get the state to, you know, do what they say they're going to do.
As far as the reimbursement rate goes for out-of-district, that's across all towns, right? It's not like, oh, you're in a building to pay districts, so no, that's inconsistent. Yeah, it's something that they will spend as part of the governor's budget and that will be consistent.
Do we, I know it's early in the year, do we anticipate any changes from the federal level with grant funding or anything like that? Like what are we going to see? Do we anticipate seeing increases or anything new or?
So ultimately, the states are almost a year behind when it comes to federal funds. So this, we will get, excuse me, we will get our allocations in July for our regular title grants. So those are the title grants, our special education IDVA grant. So that should be fairly consistent. We are seeing some rumbling that 2A, which is our pressure development grant, might be coming away. But those should be fairly consistent for this, for FY27. Down the road, I don't really know. I do know that the Department of Education, as it stands, the federal entity, is actually very much built into policy and law at the federal level. So to actually make the change. So to actually make a change to the federal Department of Education would require a lot of red tape and other things. Whether they don't, just don't fund it, I, I, I don't know, but um this year we should be okay.
I'll forward you, like I actually sat on a, sat on our thing um two Fridays ago with the Massachusetts Associations of School Committees, because I go one hour, bunch of other. What the Department of Education does, and they'll let you level one. But they actually sent you, you actually brought the trust to see, you know, kind of what, how that all shakes out, like Jen kind of talked about, the laws around it and kind of what they actually do. Um, you know, from a, from a federal standpoint on education. So I'll, I'll forward that along to you guys, so you guys can take a look. It's like, you know, for an hour, said it on, turn it on in the background, it's kind of, you kind of learn some crazy things. Any other questions, concerns?
What was, um, when, are we doing a budget stamina or something to examine our meeting dates or?
Yeah, I honestly have never done, I normally, first time, we definitely talk to the teams. They, um, you know, at the high school, I'm doing breakfast and sit down for four hours and bang it out. Um, I think one of the big things that I would like to see is if we could actually bring that, I would rather sit and knock some of this out in a one-day thing. Everyone knows what we're doing, rather than doing it across multiple meetings. I feel like we got so bogged down in the budget last year that, not that we forgot about other things going on, but it was just a budget, it's a budget, now it's a budget, now it's, you know, meetings. I would rather try to get a lot of the budget stuff done to come in with spot, make changes as we kind of need to, need to, and then so, you know, do that.
That's what we did historically right up through.
It's honestly much better. I, I think maybe you're disagreeing with me, Dan, but.
No, 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 I was just saying, you know, historically, we did it that way, um, and I don't think we ever done four hours.
No.
Um, because, I mean, there's, there's only so many things you can do and change. I mean, you can go line by line, but um we did, we did that right up through COVID. And then we, I think we tried to do like two birds, one stone with our public hearing and our budget in a very good meeting, but that's not going to work out. Um, and I think last year was, uh, we all know it was a challenging budget year, but it was a very unique budget year. Like, in all of my time here, I don't think that it's ever been that much budget discussion. And there was a lot of outside factors from the schools and towns and things like that, but. Um, I know we had, like I said, we used to do it historically, um, on a Saturday morning at the central office. But, I mean, to your point, if we get everything on the right page and that is our, we used to do it the Saturday before a meeting, so then that, that, that meeting we voted on, what we had gone through, those.
Yeah, I just, for me, it seemed like, and this is no, to no one's fault whatsoever, but it's like, you know, you get stuck on one topic, whatever it may be on the budget session, you know, and then it's like forty-five minutes, an hour and an hour and forty minutes. And you know, and I felt like it just kind of got piecemeal together in a way over multiple meetings. Where like, if we could just sit down and hash some of that stuff off, I think that would be, you know, largely beneficial, bring that back. I've never done that before, so I don't exactly know what that looks like, but I would rather sit at eight o'clock on a Saturday morning and, and do it, you know, and get it done and hopefully get it done correctly. And then when we come to meetings, it's more of, you know, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're looking to do and keep these things, you know, to, not that we're going until ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it, you know, is our process has remained relatively the same as we, we look to do what's best for our students. We know, I, I don't think we've ever had a fully funded budget since I've been here from, from our initial draft to our rendering, I don't think it's ever been the same. Um, but I think that, you know, to, to just lay everything out, have our different scenarios, because I think that was what we was unique about last year is. We could get to a certain place and then, oh, oh, we needed to be this percentage or oh, this or, or those different things. We may still need to do that this year because we don't know what the, you know, as we saw in that initial email today. Um, you know, we're going, there's going to be change along the way, as I always, I always look at our budget, it's a very living document. And we've seen changes right up until town meeting, here's past. Um, so, but I think, you know, to, to have that is necessarily a bad thing to just put everything, you know, on a light board or whatever it is and just start from the top and. You know, I mean, are we going to go through thousands of line items? Probably not, but if we look at the beginners. Um, you know, again, to be creative, looking to that maybe makes a change.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not all sense probably right now too. I think moving forward with the special negotiation years, I think we need to look at possibly starting them a little sooner. Um, we know our budgets do, you know, around March twenty-fourth every year. Um, you know, my fear here is, you know, negotiations might not be wrapped up for all three unions potentially. Um, you know, hopefully they all are, um, but I think that's going to be a huge factor. And again, the public transparency and trust and everywhere else, people aren't able to follow more, pay attention. And that number, or if that number has to change by the millions, um, you know, that, to me, that's an issue. So I would like to see, you know, as we go through negotiations, and again, maybe it's not any of us on this board, um, you know, but I think it would be a nice thing to, you know, maybe push those negotiations a little earlier. And have it be the goal that we're in locked in, ready to go, um, you know, from a collective mindset, because, you know, just like for the teachers, it's easier. Once everything's done and over with, it's that less stress and no one's worrying about going into the summer, you know, not having a contract or whatever it may be. So I would like to kind of maybe see if we can push those negotiations a little bit, if, if possible, in the, in the end of those years.
So if we would like to do a Saturday workshop, our budget is due to town hall on, on Monday, March twenty-fourth. I would recommend maybe Saturday, March first, if that date works for the committee. Um, I think we'd have a tendency to technically schedule for February eighth, but that might be too early, we're good about this game. I feel like we might want to play around and then get a little more freedom before we do the full budget workshop. Um. I would say perhaps um Saturday, March first, because then we do have a meeting on the fifth where you guys could approve it. Um, and it looks, oh, actually, I'm sorry, we have it on the twelfth. So I apologize, we have it on the twelfth, so we could do either the March first or March eighth.
Um, obviously, you should, it all depends on timing for me, and I can do, if we went in the morning, I don't know.
We would, we would go on.
And we give them this, uh, some practice or something, but I'm on that, you know, I should be prepared for the morning if we get sent to it. Yeah, I don't see a, see an issue with the A's either. So for my, I mean, do you think?
That came with the work for you? Yeah, yeah, sure.
Do you think we should, I mean, again, I just know, at least, let's, sorry, let's lock our marching song first. Do you think we should tentatively schedule another meeting on the nineteenth before we get this budget spread away for now as well? I know it'd be back to that me, meetings for a week or a while. Because what happens if we don't have something spread away from the twelfth and now we have the one?
I think that would be the goal, is to get everything spread away from here. Because otherwise, we're kind of going back to the just every, or if there's maybe things, like if we have questions on the ace.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, should we schedule it down tentatively? And then if we get it, we know we don't vote on it on the, on the twelfth, we're meeting on the nineteenth. That's my only concern.
On the twelfth. You know, we also have.
We've got enough money to add it that week.
I mean, I, I guess I would just kind of look at the committee to possibly thinking, in case, maybe leave that nineteenth open on your calendars. And then as we kind of go through this process again, you know, because like I said, I don't, my, my goal here is, is I don't want to be sitting here talking about the budget and doing what I felt like was nothing else but the budget for the next three, four, or five months, whatever it may be.
Okay.
Definitely do them too, so.
What was that due date?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have a, uh, we have a school committee meeting on March twelfth. It is due to the twenty-fourth, so my recommendation is that we're going to meet on the eighth for our budget workshop, that we schedule ourselves to do our voted hearing and the budget vote on the twelfth. And worst case, if we're not ready, we could cancel it and reschedule for the nineteenth. But that would be my recommendation to do budget form, budget hearing and budget vote on the twelfth. And we'll just be ready. Um, on the eighth, um.
Yeah, not too early. The only problem, I, I do have some type of film game that will probably be at one or two, which is fine.
Well, we won't be here this whole time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so I just don't want to push it back to eleven, but get, get in there and take it in there.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Seven, eight, no, nine's fine.
What time's the worst place for kids to get up?
They're wrong, right? Sleep two, but you have something to do, just get, get in there and get up. All right, so nine AM, March eighth. Cool.
No.
Any other questions, thoughts, suggestions? But on that, it, it's probably.
It will likely be in the Yale library, because uh the conference room isn't big enough. So we'll probably do it in the Yale library. If all of our meetings are public meetings, well, it's, yeah, it's a public meeting, yes. Yeah, and non-executive session.
Uh, anything else on the budget?
Because they want to go with that.
To bring them aside. Uh, all right, what we got then? Other positions, any topics not anticipated in forty-eight hours?
Um, just Christine shared some information with you guys earlier in the afternoon, um, that was northwest of the finance committee. So we wanted you all to be able to see that people will put that up tomorrow. Um, and that's it.
All good. All right, um, we move to our turn, so all of the, thank you.